I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Monday, August 26, 2013. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leona?
Councilor Gerlach?
Present.
Councilor Ruda?
Present.
Councilor Shabbett?
Present.
Councilor Lambitt?
Present.
Councilor Roderick?
Present.
Councilor DeMaderis?
Present.
Councilor Pelletier?
Yes, ma'am.
All councilors present.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of regular council meeting, August 13, 2013. Councilor Pelletier abstains, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, August 13, 2013. Councilor Pelletier abstains, abstains. Approval of executive session minutes, special meeting, August 19, 2013. Receipt of minutes from the following boards, commissions, Economic Development Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Received from Middletown Councilors Richard Adams and Barbara Von Villas regarding regional high school. Received from Tiverton Library Realty, Inc., board chair Barbara O'Donnely regarding transfer of title of property upon completion of the construction of new library. Attorney Brian Cunha claims three referred to the interlocal trust. Approval of tax assessors' abatements. Scheduling of a public hearing on October 15 on proposed amendment to Article 5, Section 1, Note 1 of zoning ordinance to include open space zones requested by Audubon Society of Rhode Island. Okay, I will entertain a motion. Is there anything to remove?
Mr. President, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to remove item 2A and 3A, please.
Anything else?
And 3A was the item I was going to remove as well.
And I'd like to remove 1A.
1A. Okay, all right. I will entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda without 1A, 2A, and 3A.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Okay, well, we'll begin with 1A.
Yes, at the bottom of 2, page 2, where we have the appointment for the Board of Canvassers, it identifies, President Roderick noted, the Board of Canvassers requested Paul Amaral be nominated to the Board. That would be the, instead of the Board of Canvassers, that would be the Democratic Party.
Right.
That's the only item on that that I have.
It's the Democratic Town Committee, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, Leona, did you make that note?
I'll make a motion to accept item A1A, minutes of the regular council meeting of August 13. Councilor Pelletier abstains, absent.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Gerlach.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, item A2 was the Economic Development Commission minutes of June 13, 2013. You know, I always enjoy reading what the Economic Development Commission is up to. They seem to have a lot going on. And I was wondering if other councilors might be interested in asking the EDC to come and kind of give more of a formal update as to activities that are underway. I think we're ramping up to, I continue to get a lot of inquiries about economic development in town and what's happening. So, in order to better inform and respond to folks who are reaching out to me, I thought it might be good to have the EDC come and give a bit of an update, if others are so interested as well.
Well, periodically, they do come before us.
I couldn't remember the last time, so.
But, yeah, it's been a while, but we can ask the town administrator to request that they come before us.
Pick a meeting, and I'll ask them to come.
Anything else?
Yeah, no preference. Whatever works for schedules. So, with that, I'll make a motion to accept item CA2A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Gerlach.
I think it's a sentiment shared by all here. You know, read item 3A, which was the note from a couple of the Middletown Town Councilors regarding this concept of a regional high school with interest. And I didn't know if the school committee had seen that or not, but thought it might be more appropriate for such an initial correspondence to head out to the school committee for review and some due diligence there.
Barbara Von Villas has tried to set up something with me because of my past experience with the school committee. And just this evening, I emailed her that she should get in contact with the school committee and then maybe present something to us with their recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a request that this be forwarded to the school committee. Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent agenda, item 3A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
Mr. President, let me just wait, make one more suggestion. The note from Councilmen Adams and Councilwoman Von Villas was directed to the Tiverton Town Council. So, just as a matter of courtesy, I'd like to make sure that either Mr. Goncalo or Mrs. Mello contact them and let them know what our decision was. Thank you.
Okay, open public forum for announcements, comments, questions. Barbara Pelletier, Secana River Bridge and Industrial Park.
Hi, Barbara Pelletier. Friday night at sunset, I was lucky enough to go over the Secana River Bridge. And I know this is probably not what you want to hear, but it's pretty, it's beautiful, and we should be rejoicing in that the bridge turned out the way it did. And it's uplifting, it's not London Bridge, it's not a big bridge across the Danube, but it's a darn nice little bridge in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of the smallest state with a very nondescript town at either end of it. And I think we should be happy about that and, you know, suck up the whatever, 10 cents in that and pay it. And I think we all live in this neighborhood because we enjoy the water. We know that we have to go over bridges, it might cost money, somebody's got to pay for it, we're using it. And I'd rather forego an extra coffee and go over the bridge than commute through Providence and Central Falls and all of that. So, that's just a thought that I had. And I think, just, you know, stop with the negativity about the bridge. It's nice, it's different. Did you see it all lit up? It's nice. I'm very happy about that. And I was also happy to see the industrial park might be moving off the radar, and it'll free up all the energy of the planners, of all the wasted thinking that we've put in for 40 years or something like that. And I think we can move on to better and happier things and send them a fruit basket and wish them good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you buy it and it'll move on and generate taxes or something, wouldn't you think so?
Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. Tom Ramitowsky, motorcycles and noise ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Ramitowsky, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. On your last agenda, there was some sort of an application or a notice about planning for a motorcycle-type parade. I don't see it on this agenda, I'm not sure why exactly it's not there, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments about that in the event that it occurs at some time when I'm not here. Originally, when it came up, there was discussion that it would involve 100-plus motorcycles going up and down main road for a couple of hours, and that could easily be construed as a nuisance by a number of people from the noise that would be generated. So, I'd just like to remind everybody that we do have a noise ordinance that would cover items like this, and we need to make sure that the organizers of this parade are aware of that and fill out the form. And I don't know if it qualifies for a public hearing or not, but something of that duration of that size probably does. And I'd also like to ask if you could make sure that the organizers would stipulate that only noise-legal motorcycles would participate in this parade. There are some that are modified to make a large amount of noise illegally, I believe, and we really should, if we're sponsoring it, or the fire department, or whoever was doing it, is organizing this, I think we need to take the lead and make sure that any motorcycles that participate are in fact legal from a noise perspective. Thank you.
And I believe this is going to be on our next agenda. Chief?
Mr. President, if I may just address that momentarily. Fire Department is not sponsoring this, we're not involved in this. The family has reached out to us from the traffic county, and I do believe they are here tonight because they thought this was going to be on the agenda. So, if it's not, I think we just need to give them the courtesy that it is not on for this evening. But they were trying to go through, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands. Fire Department is not involved, the traffic counties had mentioned it to us, that they were doing it and looking for a connection to Firefoot of Ladue's, Lieutenant Ladue's family. So, that's the only participation the Fire Department had in it.
Thanks, Chief. All right, public hearings and public presentations. Denise Sarot, Town Treasurer. Refinancing of TIF bonds, approval of resolution authorizing the issuance by the town of up to $5,400,000 in tax increment bonds, 2013 refunding series, and the execution and delivery of various documents and certificates in connection therewith.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for coming.
This is Norman Benoit, Bond Counsel.
I know.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. All right.
Mr. Benoit, could you just, for the record, introduce yourself?
Yes, Norman Benoit, Bond Counsel for the town. I was here back in, I believe it was March, and we presented the thought to the council that might be potential savings in refunding the outstanding 2002 bonds for the tax increment financing district at the Village of Mount Hope. And we were told to explore that possibility. Later on, subsequently, we didn't put the must, the town's financial advisor, Steve Maseroni at PFM, put together a request for proposals that went out to various banks requesting an indication of whether they'd be interested in purchasing some refunding bonds and what the interest rate would be and what the other terms would be. That was done. Washington Trust presented a responsive proposal that presented significant savings. They actually were the only ones that responded, partly because this is kind of a one-off deal, there aren't too many tax increment financing bonds, and it takes a lot of analysis and so forth, and the finance world's not a large deal. So, fortunately, Washington Trust stepped up to the plate and came in with a good proposal. So, what this resolution would do is basically authorize the town administrator, the town treasurer, and the president or the vice president of the council to issue these bonds. These bonds are not general obligations of the town, so the full faith and credit of the town is not pledged. If for some reason the taxes that are raised in that district were insufficient, that's all that the purchaser gets, whatever those revenues are. On the other hand, to the extent there is more revenue in the district, and historically there has been, even covering the higher interest debt, that extra money flows into the general fund. So, to the extent you can get a lower rate today, you have more money flowing into the general fund. This is akin to sort of refinancing your home mortgage. We have some rear asses in the proposed resolution. It indicates that the outstanding rate on the 2002 bonds is 6.875, which is a relatively high rate. The second rear ass indicates that interest rates have declined since 2002, and there's an opportunity to save money by prepaying and redeeming the bonds. It recites that they're not general obligations, and they're only secured by the tax increment payments from that district. And Section 1, as I said, authorizes the town administrator, town treasurer, and the president or the vice president of council to actually enter into the details of the bonds, and there's a trust indenture that would be similar to the indenture that was done back in 2002. It'd be with the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company, which is the current trustee on the existing bonds. And there'd be a refunding trust agreement to pay off the old bonds, they'd be paid off within 30 days. You can't send out notice that you're going to pay off the old bonds until you actually have the money in your hand, and you wouldn't want to do that anyway, until you had the money in your hand. So, they'd be paid in 30 days and to negotiate any other terms and conditions. We set some parameters in there so that the officers could not agree on a rate that's more than 4.50%, which provides a cushion because while it's going to be a fixed rate, it's going to be fixed three days before the closing. So, if it closed today, the indicative rate would have been, I believe, 3.52. But it will be based on the nine-month federal home loan, nine-year, I'm sorry, the nine-year bond, nine-year Federal Home Loan Bank amortization rate plus 235 basis points. So, whatever the rate is three days ahead, that would be the rate. But if it were to exceed 4.5%, we wouldn't do the deal, we'd have to come back before the council. The other protection we have in here is, this is not like you take a 15-year home mortgage and refund it with a 30-year. The period of time in which the bonds are to be paid off will not exceed the period, so we're not stretching anything out at all. So, and in Section 2, the authorized officers can enter into whatever agreements and make the covenants to keep the interest on the bonds tax exempt because the rate that we've been quoted is a tax exempt rate. Section 3, as the resolution takes effect on passage. I'd be happy to answer any questions any council members or anyone else may have.
Any questions from the council?
Sorry, Mr. Benoit, just a couple of questions here. You've used the term "district" several times here, and I apologize, I don't know what you're referring to there.
It's the Mount Hurrah District. It's where all the condos are up in.
Okay, that, sorry, I had never heard it referred to as a district before.
They're in a special tax district.
Okay.
That is sort of an overlay of, because the benefits of that bond were being paid by.
Okay. And what is to account for the $90,000 difference between the 5.31 million, that's the current balance, and the 5.4?
There's a 1% prepayment penalty, if you will, so right there, there's $53,000 on top. The 5.4, we probably wouldn't need to borrow the whole amount, but we built in a little cushion. And there's about $57,000 in cost of issuance through various fees. Bond council fee, financial advisor fee, bank fee, bank council fee, and so forth.
I'm sorry, can I, what were those two numbers again? You just said $54,000 in 1% prepayment.
The estimated cost of issuance would be $57,000.
$57,000, and then the fees are?
The fees would be a bond council fee.
Is that in addition? I mean, because you, I heard two numbers that sounded like they added up to more than $100,000, so I must.
Well, there's some extra money in the debt service reserve fund which would be thrown in to the escrow to prepay the bonds. Again, we might not need the extra, but the cushion would be in there, and those officers would authorize it. But the 1% is a given, that you have to add $53,100, I believe, on top of the number that's owed, because that's the principal, plus the 1%.
Sure. My only other question is, and this may have been, I can't remember the exact points from the March discussion, but do we have a sense of rough cut, how much we're saving?
At the rate I quoted, which if it was the 3.52 today, again, that could change, but hopefully not significantly, you'd be saving net-net of all expenses, and this is present value, because a saving nine years from now, a dollar saved nine years from now is worth less today than getting it nine years. So, you take it down to present value as to what it's worth today, it's to be about $742,000 in savings. The percentage, which is the way in our industry we look at it, is roughly 14% present value savings, 14% of the amount of the bonds you're refunding. To put it in a context, the state of Rhode Island, when they have a 3% threshold for savings, so they'll actually look at doing the refunding if it's over 3%, and you're at 14.
Okay, Treasurer Saret, anything you want to add?
Well, I just did a calculation in real dollars, in the event that anybody asked a question like that, like next year we would save $100,000, following year around $125,000, and it's steady about $125,000 a year, just in principal and interest payments every year in the budget.
Yes, good.
There's nine years left on this, this term of this law.
Perfect.
Now, just one quick question. So, there, it's Washington Trust, they've agreed to buy at least, or they've agreed to buy exactly $5.4 million worth of bonds, or is there an opportunity for an issuance to go out and we not meet the threshold of?
They've agreed to buy an amount up to 5.4, and realistically, it's not going to be any higher than that. So, we're either going to refund it all or we're going to refund none. And if we don't refund it all, then we either come back to you or the deal, you know, doesn't get done.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, is there, in any estimation, any likelihood that we don't issue enough on this issue? And we, they sell $4 million worth of bonds, and then we got to kind of start from scratch again?
They're not going to sell them, they're actually buying these and they're keeping them in their loan portfolio.
Oh, oh, so, never mind. All right, thanks.
So, in essence, they're sold. Okay, anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the resolution from the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island.
I'll make the motion that we approve the refinancing of TIF bonds, resolution authorizing the issuance by the town of up to $5.4 million in tax increment bonds, 2013 refunding series, and the execution and delivery of various documents and certificates in connection therewith.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Denise, thanks. We knew we threw the ball at you and you ran with it. Thank you so much. David Robert, Tax Assessor. Brief review of the newly revised town website, tivertonri.gov.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Basically, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the revised town website. As you know, in the past, there have been some complaints about the functionality of the prior site. The new site has been up for approximately one month. To date, I haven't really heard any criticism of the site, which is good. I've had some positive feedbacks. But if anyone does have any feedback, positive, negative, not only through the town council but the residents as well, I would appreciate it because, you know, our website for the town is a live and breathing thing, that we all really need to participate in to make sure that we always bring the most current, relevant information to everyone. So, there is a link to my email address, which actually is the webmaster address. So, if anyone does have any ideas or suggestions, please forward them to me. There are some things I'd like to point out. We are now carrying the town council meetings. We are linking through the YouTube page that Steve works on. And I am looking for some photographs because, you know, that's, you know, kind of livens up the pages a bit. So, there is a request on the site under the, I believe it's the Discover Tiverton link, that I'm looking for anyone that has photographs to submit them to me so we can, throughout the year, post those pictures on the website. And obviously, we'll be crediting whoever does submit those photographs. And speaking of photographs, I do apologize, last meeting, we were supposed to try to do a town council group shot, that didn't quite work out, as planned. I wasn't going to say anything, Brett, but it's all Brett's fault. So, we like to, I'd like to try to reschedule that. So, I'll be in touch with Nancy unless, Mr. President, you have an idea as far as when we can do that.
Is everyone going to be at our next scheduled meeting?
I think so.
Then we'll be at our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, so, what I would like to do is do, you know, obviously with your approval, is do a group shot, and then individuals as well. And if any town councils wish to add some information, bio-information next to your picture as well, we can upload that information. But anyways, I just wanted to do a quick review that we are up and running with the new site, seems to be working out pretty well. And again, whether or not any town councilors or any residents have any feedback, I'd be much interested in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you much.
Okay, advertised publications, court of ordinances, proposed amendments to Chapter 67, Flood Plane Management Program.
Who's presenting this to? Mr. President, for the record, Andrew Tights, town solicitor. This is required updates from FEMA of the flood plane ordinance. Essentially, it's one of those government mandates. They provide the flood insurance program, but if you want to be part of the flood insurance program, you have to implement their guidelines. Every couple of years, they revise them and change them. This was last done in 2010. They've come in with new changes in guidelines, they provide us with a model of them, which you have before you. And in fact, I need to introduce, as a floor amendment, if you can take one and pass it along. This is, this is just the first page, which is showing a change to Section 67-2, the applicability. We actually have, it's basically just changing the references to particular flood maps to reference the new maps. So, I'd ask that, when you do consider it, if you can consider it with this amendment, that amended paragraph of 67-2, which has what we believe are the correct numbers now for the flood panels, the flood plane map panels which apply. There aren't too many specific changes. Most of the changes are reflecting the new information, adding a few definitions, and changing things that way. But the only thing that's making it stricter on people, I'll tell you, isn't even in here, which is the fact that FEMA is now providing, you can get lower insurance, there's a minimum height you have to be above the flood level in order to get insurance. But now, essentially, if you go a foot or two or three feet higher than that, you can get a reduction in your insurance for each foot above the minimum. They want people to be contemplating climate change and as far as catastrophic storms, so they're actually providing a financial incentive to go above that minimum. Other than that, I'm open for questions, and of course, it's a public hearing.
Okay, anything from the public? Anything from the public? Anything from the public? Hearing none, anything else, Mr. Tights?
No.
All right, then I will, I guess we'll just make a motion to accept it?
Move to adopt it.
Move to adopt it. I mean, I'll accept a motion to adopt the Flood Plane Management Program, Chapter 67, as presented with the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I just, I had a, I'm sorry, I just had a couple of questions, just, where can I get a copy of this 100-year flood plane map for Tiverton? Is that readily available?
Gareth is our administrator, Gareth has them. It's a series of panels, it's not one map.
Okay.
But it's a series of maps based on the locales, and I believe he has the new maps, because he has taken the training to administer this.
The easiest, if I just put my own two cents in, the easiest to do is find them online. FEMA has a flood insurance rate map maker, where you can put in your address and it'll give you the panel, and then you can generally find the location of where you are. find the location of where you are, and it'll tell you the zone, and then you find out what zone means what, if it's A, B, C, D, X, whatever.
Okay.
It's not very difficult.
All right. Any else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That closes the public hearings. Nothing as a Board of Licensing. Okay. Unfinished business, wastewater management, Chairman Leroy Kendricks. Wastewater facilities plan update as prepared by AECOM of Chelmsford, Massachusetts, to Rideham for review. Hey, Mr. Kendricks.
Good evening. I said it's going to work. Oh, let's see. So the last time I was here, I was asked to present a case, basically to present that the solutions that we've come up with are the best solutions that serve the interests of the town. And we're prepared to make that case this evening and answer any questions as a result of our presentation. So the first part of this was to do a facilities plan update. We've had several facilities plans done in the past since 1968. And all of the facilities plans, can you scroll down? In 1968, 1975, and 2000, all stated that the town would benefit from sewers on the north side of town. Now, the idea was to update the 2000, the 2000 facilities plan, because there's been a lot of changes in the town since 2000. And some of the driving forces, along with revisiting the idea of sewers, was the Seppul Act of 2007, which basically legislated that all septic systems within 200 feet, or all onsite systems within 200 feet, had to be in compliance with the most modern regulations. Meaning, if you had a seppul or failed septic system, it had to be corrected. And so that's one issue. And we have lots of areas in town, Riverside Drive, and some of the Robert Gray areas that, and Stafford Pond, and some other areas that will be affected by the Seppul Act. The other issue, another issue that we have going on in town is that we have a stormwater problem. And because of the way the stormwater runs in certain areas of town, it gets, the stormwater gets affected by the failed septic systems in certain areas of town. And that runoff of stormwater, it rains, the stormwater picks up the wastewater of failed systems, and it drives that wastewater into the bay. And so it creates fecal matter into the bay, which causes problems. And so Rideham cited the city, or the town, and basically said that you really need to do something. They included in a report in 2011 and said, you really need to commit to a schedule and consider putting sewers in. So we needed to look at that area of town, too. And the third driving force has to do with one of the areas in town, the Bay Street area. We've got a situation there where 90% of the homes in that area have failed septic systems. And the problem is, some of those areas are contaminated, and the idea of going in and excavating out an old seppul and putting in a new septic system in a contaminated area is pretty risky for the homeowner. And we really find that the best way to deal with that is to put in a sewer system and take care of those folks. Right now, they're in an inalienable position where they can't sell their house with a failed system. And dealing with a failed system on potentially contaminated soil is problematic to these folks. And so sewers in those areas would give them some relief, and obviously add to the property value of their homes, and make the homes at least sellable, from a wastewater perspective. So if we looked at all of these driving forces, and they were looked at in this facilities plan update, it really concluded that there are several areas in town that would benefit from adding sewers. There are other areas in town that it's not economically feasible to put sewers in. So one of the goals of this, this update is to look at the most modern technologies and try to come up with a technical solution that would be the most cost-effective for these people that are affected by these driving forces, and also to come up with the most economically feasible solutions that would be in the best interest of all of the communities involved. We also sought to make sure that we could come up with some sort of funding sources, either by grants, or loans, or actually a combination of both, that would make this just the most attractive it can be. Obviously, no one wants to spend the money, but the idea is that something has to be done. And so there's really a couple of choices. The choices are to look at putting in sewers and having that be the most economical solution, or the second choice is not to put in sewers, and everyone's on their own. Generally, there is not, there will not be an option of doing nothing, because we do have an inspection program that we've been doing for the last five years, and it's going to continue to go through various sections of town. And when the inspection reveals a failed system, the homeowner is going to have to replace the system. It's not an option of, well, I'm not going to do anything. It's going to, they're going to have to take care of it. The town is also going to have to take care of stormwater issues. So as long as there's failed systems, the stormwater's going to be picking up, the stormwater, the fecal matter, it's going to be washing into the bay, and so the town has a stormwater issue, as well as residents of the town having a wastewater issue. So I'm going to go to, I'm going to follow, I'm going to talk a little bit about the findings of the study that AECOM did for us. So it confirmed, it says documented, but it confirmed the need for better wastewater treatment and disposal at the north end of town. It looked at the cost to install sewers, and basically found that installing sewers is the least expensive option. It looked at, based on financing and availability of money, it looked at the idea of forming a sewer district in order to take advantage of grant money to make the overall solution the least cost to the residents. So, and it also came up with a plan, that if we, if we had a plan, it would extend the deadline for complying with the 2007 Seppul Act to 2020. If the town has a plan, and it's committed to executing the plan, then it gives, from now until 2020, the time to design, finance, construct the sewers, and get into compliance. So it gives the residents some breathing room. If we don't do this, then enforcement actions start immediately, and as we inspect and find people that are not in compliance, then they'll have to chase their systems out. So we looked, here's the areas you can see on the screen that we've identified. And we identified in Phase 1, the most high priority areas, and those are Riverside Drive, Phase 1 and 2, which is in the, in the orange-red down at the southern end of that drawing. And then the Bay Street is in the pink and partially in the green up top. And then the Robert Gray area is in the blue, is Robert Gray Area 1, which is right along the shore there. And so those are the three high priority areas. And so, next slide. So let's talk about costs. We first want to look at Riverside Drive, Stonebridge area. A new septic system in those areas, because of the conditions, high groundwater, proximity to the shoreline, ledge, topography, you name it, is pretty expensive. We've had residents say they've gotten estimates that cost as much as $60,000 to put in a high-tech treatment plant to deal with their septic. The range anywhere from $20,000 to $60,000. If you were to go out and get a loan for 10 years, whether it's a home equity loan or whatever, you could have payments over 10 years from $210,000 to $500,000 a month. That's by, you know, having your own system, and that's your own personal finances that you have to deal with it. If we are able to get a 45% grant for sewers, that drops the cost to about $16,500, and we can get it amortized over 40 years, which drops the cost, under those conditions, to somewhere around $125,000 a month. So we feel like sewers in this area is a, you know, is a big advantage. It'll also help people that, it'll help property values, and it's really a good thing for the town and for the residents in Riverside Drive area. If we're not able to get USDA loans, or if there's no support for having a separate sewer district, and we just have to get loans, and the loans that you can get from the state are SRF loans for 20 years, then the cost goes up to about $231,000 a month. So there's, our recommendation is that the sewer, you know, forming a sewer district and trying to get the grants associated with being a district is the best cost, least-cost solution, and best deal for the residents. Bay Street area, the conditions there are a little better, but you've got contaminated soil to deal with. If you don't go with the sewer systems there, then you're talking about, you know, $270,000 to $320,000 a month. Average cost of the septic system, $25,000 to $30,000. You've got lots of soil conditions and that to deal with. Now, some of that can be mitigated by some monies that might be available because of the contaminated area. But basically, we're looking at, if we have sewers in the area, their cost will be about $11,000, again, amortized over 40 years, and average monthly fees, that'd be about $105,000 per month. If you chose not to form a sewer district and to get a standard SRF loan, it raises the cost to about $175,000 a month for 20 years. In the Robert Gray area, cost of a new septic system is anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 a month. Over 10 years, that cost will be $151,000 to $271,000 per month. If you put sewers in, it's $14,000 average, amortized over 40 years, including a sewer user fee, about $115,000 a month. And again, if we don't go with the sewer district and USDA grant, it bumps the price up to about $206,000 a month. So you can see in every case, these high priority areas, there's a financial advantage to going with sewers, and there's an even more financial advantage of going, forming a sewer district. Bay Street, we have about 123 properties. About 90% have been identified as having failed or compromised seppuls. Again, most of these properties are going to have to replace their, you know, if they could replace their systems, it's going to have to be done in the next two to five years, at an average cost of $25,000 apiece. That's, that's kind of where that's at. Robert Gray, 566 properties. Average age of these properties is 62 years old, which means they were built in the early 50s. 75% have their original seppuls that, when they fail, not yet, but when they fail, they will have to be replaced by a modern septic system. So we're saying that in two to 10 years, pretty much all these systems are going to have to be replaced. So whether you replace it with a new septic system, or you just take care of it and put it on sewers now and be done with it, that's a choice that, that the folks will have to make in that area. And then in the Riverside Drive area, there's 522 lots. If you drive that area, you can see the conditions of houses that are right over the water, and you don't even want to know what they're doing with sewage there. So there's, there's issues there. Boy, even some of the high, I can't even believe that some of the, even the high-tech solutions would be good solutions there because of the lack of land and the condition of the land, the ledge, the high water table, the size of the lots. Some of them, literally, if you could put a plant in, it would take up their whole front lot. It'd be a wastewater treatment plant right in their front yard, which makes no sense. So we think that we've done a pretty thorough job in assessing the situation, and our recommendation is that these three areas be the first phase. These are the high priority areas. So basically, what we're talking about, the next steps, you know, if you approve this facilities plan, then the next step is to submit it to Rhode Island DEM, get their comments, address their comments, and then if you agree that we should form a sewer district, then we want to hire a consultant to help us put together the enabling legislation to form that district. It has to be a state, has to be a state law, legislation. And then upon approval of that by the state, then we would go into each one of these neighborhoods and, again, present the case to the residents, and have them vote by neighborhood, whether or not they want to be a part of the district or not. So I just want to reiterate that this is a neighborhood-by-neighborhood deal, and so it's not something that the rest of the people in the town would pay for. It doesn't come out of their general fund, or taxes, or any of that kind of stuff. It's, it's a, it's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood district, if it works out.
We do have these handouts issued. Pass them out beforehand, but...
Okay. I'll open it up to questions.
Questions, Congressman?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
What about the folks who already purchased some of your systems? What options do they have? Because I'm sure they'll be paying, you know, on their system already for so many years.
Yeah. We, we will have to come up, we don't have any district, or we don't have any rules at this point, we have to get to this point. But I, we have to consider people that have already made an investment, and figure out what's fair to those people, and what's fair to the people in the community. But there will be consideration for people who have put systems in, and I'm not prepared at this time to say what that's going to be. It kind of, we have to kind of get down the road. We have more inspections to do in the areas. We'd like to know, for instance, in the Bay Street area, and in Riverside Drive, and all the areas, how many people have put in septic systems, and when those were put in? Because everyone that's put a system in, and who doesn't immediately start to contribute to putting a sewer system in, it kind of raises the cost of everything. to putting a sewer system in, it kind of raises the cost of everything else, of everyone else. So we really kind of need to see the whole picture and come up with something that would be fair and equitable to those people who have made the investment and fair to the people who have the investment to make. Because if sewers go in the community, everybody benefits, whether you put in a new septic system or not. But there absolutely will be consideration. I can't say what that's going to be right now.
Well, it will be mandatory for them to tie in?
If the neighborhood votes, oh, you're talking about people who already put a system in? At some point, I don't know whether that's five years out, 10 years out, 15 years out, but at some point, I would suspect that they would have to tie in. You know, depending on the age of the system or whatever.
Leroy, what's the average life of a high-tech septic system?
John, you want to address that?
They're a mechanical system. They're not a conventional system where everything flows by gravity. Pumps break. After about five years or so, your start, your costs start to escalate. You do have a, have the expense of an annual contract with your service provider, so that if something does break, they'll come out and fix it right away and not wait till the end of the weekend. But the parts that they replace, most probably, are not covered under the base agreement, yes? Just like your oil burner.
All right. So, but, so the average life is what, seven to 10 years?
Well, actually, the report indicated it would be 20 to 30 years. I know I read that somewhere in this report.
For the high-tech system?
For the high-tech systems.
Okay.
And let me add, Mr. Lincoln, one thing that was not addressed in here is that you can offset, to some extent, the cost that you've outlined here by the cost of maintaining and operating some of these systems. I have, as you know, John, one of these high-tech systems.
Yes, sir.
And they're not inexpensive to maintain on a yearly basis, especially when you're mandated to have a six-month inspection. They are expensive, and if anything ever goes wrong, they become very expensive. So that really, I don't know how you ever factor in something like that.
Right. But anytime you have a mechanical system...
But there is an offset with those type of systems.
That is correct. And the base system, yes, it will last, you know, 10, 15, 20, maybe even 30 years if it's maintained properly.
Parts of it, I mean, it's tanks. The tanks are probably going to be fine. It's the mechanicals inside that are...
The mechanicals, you're going to be changing, you, that's where the cost is going to be.
Other questions?
I just got a, no, go ahead, Josh.
I may have had a number of questions.
Go for it.
I want to thank both of you for the tremendous effort that you've made, and I just wanted to go through a couple of items to make sure that I understand where the project is going and where your recommendations are. Looking at the, and to some extent, I'll try to fill in for people who may be viewing this and other people that simply don't have copies of these reports. Looking at the wastewater facilities plan update, and I'm referring specifically to pages 87 through 93, Leroy, you've identified all of the areas that eventually you're hoping to put in the sewer lines, starting off with Riverside Drive area, Bay Street, the Church Street area, and so forth. Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, you indicate at page 93 what the areas of priority are, and here's what I'm interested in trying to do at this point with my first series of questions. You indicate that the high priority areas would be Phase 1 of Riverside Drive area, the Bay Street area, the Lipus Road area, and Phase 1 of the Robert Gray area. On page 93. Do you have, I'm sorry, you're looking all at the same report here? This is paragraph 7.3, .3.9. It says, "Inflammation of Sewer Expansion."
Leroy, you want to look at mine?
Yeah, we may not have the same, the same report in front of us. I'm sorry, Mr. Leroy, I just assumed that that was the same report.
Should be.
Okay.
And I'm looking specifically at page 93.
Okay.
Where I've just identified the high priority areas. My question is really twofold. Of course, there are a lot of areas other than the high priority areas that are identified in the report where eventually you intend to have the sewer lines. My question is, do we have a timetable for this? And for the average taxpayer, what I'm asking is, when do I begin saving money? I see, for example, the Church Street area is not considered a high priority area. If I was living in the Church Street area, when would I anticipate I'm going to have to make a decision here? And more important, I guess, for the high priority areas, when will they have to make this decision? I mean, do you have a rough timetable that they can use?
What we would like to do, let me just make sure that everyone is aware of the priority areas. Riverside Drive 1 and 2 are actually a high priority area. The Robert Gray, number 1, and the Bay Street area. And I'm not, I don't know whether this is a misprint or what happened here, but that's the area.
Okay.
So what we're doing here is, is if we get enabling legislation passed this winter or spring, then we'll go to the people and ask for the vote. And if there is a vote, we have a district, then we're going to be able to secure financing from USDA and be able to bond the rest of it, is the idea, and that we're hoping to do design for the high priority areas, starting in 2014, going through 2015, and put together a scheduled construction, depending on how much money we can get in the subsequent years. All three phases, three parts of the high priority areas won't start in the same year because there's only so much USDA grant money available. So in the $2 to $3 million a year total financing from USDA would be available. So, depending on who votes and et cetera, then we'll decide what areas we can do first, and it'll, you know, the construction of one area will start one year based on the money, then the second, and the third. So, we can't put an exact schedule together, but these, these high priority areas, we're looking at digging dirt sometime in 15, 2015, 16-type of area.
There is, on page 103, Mr. Lambert, there's a proposed design and construction schedule. 103 is actually at the start of the pagination issue. But it, I mean, it has, I mean, if this all went through at this high level, I mean, construction would be going on through 2035.
Well, one of the things that we acknowledge is that some of these areas, the ones that are in the out phases, may not ever see sewers. It may get to the point where, we know that these high priority areas will benefit, but as we get further down the road, some of the areas, and we'll have to do the, we'll have to do the inspections to see what percentage, like in the Garden Heights area, what percentage of failed systems are there? And if we do the inspection and we find that it's a pretty low percentage of failed systems, then those folks might vote that, hey, you know, it's, we don't want to do it. And that's fine. That just means that people with the failed systems will be on their own, they'll have to replace their systems. And so it may, depending on, again, the number of failed systems, but if you go into an area and you've got 50% or 60% failure rate, then it may make sense that, they may vote to say, hey, let's go ahead and do it, it's going to cost us all less in the long run, et cetera. These areas that we identified initially, we have a pretty high level of confidence that sewers, because they're along the shoreline, because they're in contaminated areas, because they're in the path of stormwater, we know pretty certainly that sewers make sense here. But if we did this, doing this plan, it's not to say that all of these places are going to get sewers. It's really kind of depends, and it's going to be on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to narrow it down to is that the areas that you're selling are high priority. I guess if you were trying to wave a yellow flag to anybody, the people that are residents in those areas, in the high priority areas, really should be looking to start paying pretty soon. I mean, according to the timetable, you have a year of 2013, as your proposed design and construction schedule, from 2013 to 2017 for the high priority areas. So for them, it's an immediate issue, I assume.
Well, I don't, I don't see them paying any money until they get in service.
Oh, I agree with that, but they better do it.
So if a sewer doesn't go in until 2017 or 2016, that's when they actually start paying.
And part of the issue too is you can't do anything until they vote whether or not they want them.
That's right.
And that itself assumes legislation is passed at the state level.
That's correct. Right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stepping between now and paying. I mean, if we can go through and get the enabled legislation, and all the neighborhoods say, we're not interested, then that's it. I mean, they're on their own, and we continue the inspection program, and when we find a failed system, then they have to get it fixed within a year. That's the rules.
The, you've mentioned that, well, according to the report, you in fact have met with USDA representatives.
We have.
On the grant. I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, but how comfortable are you at this point? Because as you've described the possible financing programs, there's a huge difference to people who are going to have to be paying this, whether it's monthly or an annual, and the term of the loans.
Right.
What confidence do you have at this point? And I know you can't make guarantees, but what assurance can you give that the USDA grants are going to be available?
All I can report is the conversation that I had with the person in charge of the funding in Rhode Island. We met with her, and she told us at the time that monies were available, they were having trouble even lending out all, or giving a grant to all, for the money that they've had over the last years. And so, that's all we can go by at this point. We, you know, we're going, that's the major grant that we have right now. Our commitment is to continue to look for other funding sources and to try to drive the cost down as much as we can. Not only are we going to, you know, go for the grant, we're also going to go to Fall River and talk to them about lowering their costs to hook up and try to do everything we can to mitigate this cost, to drive it down. I think we can make the case for Fall, to Fall River, that if we add, you know, 4,000 users, they need to cut us a break. And they need to participate because they're the long-term beneficiaries of this. If we can drive the cost down enough to make it attractive to them, you know, they get long-term user fees and they don't have to get all this money upfront. So that would, that would help also. So, we can't guarantee anything. It's the government. It's on a year-by-year basis.
And all I'm, that's an excellent response. And what I was referring to, because I mean, there is a difference in what these people are going to have to come up with, depending on what plan, where you get the funding. But the report does state, and I'm quoting, and I think this is something positive, "It was noted that USDA typically does not fully utilize its yearly allocation."
That's right. That's what we were told.
"And additional yearly funding may be able to be obtained by applying through the town's political representatives," unquote.
Yes.
So, I mean, at least based on that, I think people can have a reasonable confidence that at least there's a USDA grant that may be available to them.
That's correct.
Okay.
It has been available for years. At what level? I mean, it's 45 cents on the dollar now. What it will be in the future year, five years from now, we don't know. And they don't commit, other than year by year. So, all we can go is on what we know today. And that's what this report is based on.
Now, without, in the report itself, you do indicate in a number of, at a number of points, what you anticipate the project cost and fees will be.
Yes.
And you indicate what you anticipate the payments by the various users are going to be. Now, you summarize that, or it's summarized in the report as follows, and I'm quoting this. It says, "Based on the formation of a sewer district and utilizing grants and loans through USDA as presented above, the range of cost for the average residential user is estimated to range between $11,000 and $16,500."
Yes.
"This equates to an average payment between $460 per month in parentheses, 3% loan..."
Forty and sixty.
"Forty and sixty per month in parentheses, 3% loan, 40-year payback," close parentheses. I really, I guess I had two questions after taking a look at the proposed payments or the schedule that you have for possible payments at page 124, 125, and 129. And that is, this average, does that include all of the payments and fees that you anticipate? That is, that would include putting in the sewer line? Would it include, it would include, I assume, the connection for the sewer line up to the property line? Is that...
Yes.
Okay. Does it include, and I know it's just an estimate, but does it include going from the property line into the property itself?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, it does?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, we tried to, in this, we tried to include all the fees, including the hookup fees. So the capital cost includes everything from what's in the street into the house. The monthly charge includes the payment on the loan, basically the amortized payment of the loan, plus the monthly average sewer cost, the user cost, as well as the administrative cost. So if you have a monthly payment of $115,000, it includes, and you're the typical homeowner, a three-bedroom or four-bedroom and so many HCF of flow, that's what your payment would be.
Okay.
All-inclusive.
Now, just so the, as I say, the typical taxpayer knows what he's getting for this, it would obviously not include anything relating to the cost of operating and maintaining that system once it's in?
It does. The fee, the fee that, that, there's three elements to the cost, to the monthly cost.
Okay.
Out of that $115,000 a month, say, there's principal and interest, amortize over 40 years, there's the administrative cost of running the sewer district, which means administrative and maintenance of the sewer lines, et cetera, and then there's the cost that Fall River charges us for treating our wastewater. So all three of those are included in that monthly fee.
And that month, okay, I see what you, okay. And that monthly fee then is the payment between $40 and $60 a month?
Well, there's, part of it's 40, part of it's 60, and then the other part is the amortization. Add them all up.
If you look at the slide over here, this is one of the slides, the, for, for the sewer construction, we have, we have, for Riverside Drive, we have $166, excuse me, excuse me. We have $60... We have $60 per month, which would be the cost for the, all of the construction-related fees. And then the $65 a month would be the sewer usage fees, okay, which are, we bill out quarterly.
It may, it may change with this, but that's.
Right. But to put it into a monthly, a monthly unit cost, it averages out to be about $65 a month. Whereas if you were doing, on the slide, I'm sorry, I don't have the usage charges for septic system.
Okay.
Okay. I think that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. The only other, the only other cost that I could come up with is that on page 129, you refer to a, quote, "private plumbing additions and modifications." I assume that that refers to some sort of plumbing you have to do in the house to hook up to the system once they get it to your house? Is that what you're referring to? I have no idea what it refers to, really.
That sounds approximately right.
It seems to cover revising interior plumbing in the house. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, that's not something that would generally be covered.
Yeah, we would connect, there's, there's a pipe that goes out to your existing septic system or cesspool. We make the connection at that pipe. Anything interior to the house that would have to be changed would be on the homeowner, but I can't imagine in most cases that would.
I couldn't figure out what it would be either.
Yeah.
And you didn't put down a number, so I assume it's relatively modest, whatever that number is.
There are certain circumstances where, instead of going out the back of the house to the septic system, you may want to go directly out the front of the house to pick up the sewer stub. And in that case, you may have to do some interior piping modifications to bring your, all your wastewater to the front of the house as to the, as opposed to the back of the house.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to that level of design or detail yet, so we've got all.
That type of an expense would not be, would not be covered in our figures.
So we've covered, I think, at least the betterment cost fee, the private property connection, and what we've referred to as the private plumbing additions or modifications, and the maintenance and operation. Is there any other monthly cost, or cost at all, that I'd have to be concerned about if I was one of the people in one of these priority areas?
I can't think of any, Jay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one quick additional question. On page 35, at least in my book, which is section 3 dot 4, it alludes to the fact that construction would require several easements to be acquired by the town. I was wondering if you might be able to elaborate on what those easements might be, and also whether or not the acquisition of those easements would be covered under your capital cost, or whether that would be something that, as the town, we would need to give consideration for from a, let's say, annual budgeting process or something that should be on our radar?
You know, I, I'm going to speculate here, because we haven't gotten that far into the process. Once we get into the design, then we'll be able to ascertain what easements are necessary. But I would assume that if we're a sewer district, that that would be on us to get those.
To purchase.
But I don't.
I do have a little bit further information on that.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
During the preliminary design, AECOM identified a number of parcels that we may or may not go through to save, save money instead of putting in, in forced mains to, or low-pressure sewers to bring it up to a certain street, have a dead-end street cut across a property to pick up a gravity sewer on an adjacent street. Those costs that would be involved in acquiring those easements were included in his preliminary cost estimate.
Okay.
And it is a preliminary cost estimate.
And unless I'm mistaken, I think Mr. Teich could answer that. Most easements don't cost you anything. Isn't it just a right-of-way that they're allowing you to use their property?
It depends. I mean, if you're going to be having someone hooked up, and they're getting the benefit of it, then it might not cost it. If you're running across a considerable amount of property, they may well want to be compensated for it, because they're not able to put a garage there, or put structures there, or things like that where it's running. So I have had experience with this in other towns, and it varies from people who say, oh, sure, no problem, I'll sign easement, to people who spend months of negotiating with you.
And we've had that. I mean, in the last few years, we've had to concede a little bit on fees and that in order to gain an easement. So there were some negotiations involved.
I just, I just have one question. We have a trunk line, or whatever you want to call it, a main line that exists today, correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's a 24-inch interceptor that runs from north to south.
Okay. And it goes how far?
It goes, it goes all the way to Fall River's treatment plant, and it goes up, it goes south to.
It dead-ends at the, at the north end of the villages of Mount Hope, and then it decreases in size as it comes up the hill. And the interceptor, actually, the gravity part of the interceptor ends about halfway up the hill on Souza Road.
Mr. President, I do have one more question that I was hoping Mr. Lincourt or Leroy could cover. At page 119, I wanted to make sure I, again, for somebody who's going to be impacted immediately, I think it's going to be, well, relatively soon. I think it's going to be important for them to know how much money they have to pay up front, if they have anything to pay. And under the connection fee, at page 119, Leroy, you indicate one-time fee, and this is referring to a connection fee, one-time fee paid by each user at the time of connection to the system, the typical range to be determined. But you then go on in a footnote to say, quote, "Connection fee included in debt for users who connect within one year after acceptance of the system and authorization to connect. After one year, a connection fee may be charged." If someone were to make a connection immediately, could they anticipate that their average cost is going to be in that range, then, of the $11,000 to $16,500?
Yes.
Because it would be part of the debt?
Yes.
It wouldn't be a separate payment?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think they're referring to if, five years down the road, someone wanted to join, their system failed, and they wanted to join, then there would be a separate connection fee, as well as other fees to get in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I just have, I know I'm probably getting a little too much ahead of myself, but when you're sort of hypothesizing about these fees, is it a formula that is generally, it costs $7 million to put a district in, I'm just rounding, in X neighborhood, and there are 100 homes, they all decide to go and just divide that, you know, on a pro-rata share, or is there, is it weighted for, you know, I have 100 linear feet of pipe to run, she's only got 10 linear feet of pipe to run? How is that?
There are a lot of different formulas that you can use. Right now, we're looking, we're seriously considering the equal pay for equal service. So in other words, whatever lot you have, even if it's a corner lot, you have one service, therefore, you have one, one fee. Now, the exception to that rule may be you have a lot that has a large user on that lot, where we, instead of bringing in a six-inch line, we may have to bring in an eight-inch line to there, to service you. That may be different. Personally, I am, I am not in favor whatsoever of the linear footage paid by the linear foot. That is, I don't agree with that at all.
We got, we got a lot of comments and good, good comments from the neighborhoods in the meetings that we have. And right now, we don't have answers to all of this. But, you know, there were some people that said, hey, you know, I'm going to be 10 feet away, and someone else is going to be 150 feet away. Why should I pay for, you know, we still have things to iron out. But for the purposes of this report, we just pro-rata share.
Okay.
Except if your service, if you don't have bigger than a normal service, then there might be some considerations there. If you get into, I got more square, I mean, I got more feet or whatever, then it starts to get inherently tough to deal with and maybe unfair. And, you know, I think one of the things that we want to emphasize here, too, is that we're trying to do the right thing for the most number of people in the community. And we know that there's not going to be 100 percent support for this. But I hope people appreciate that we did put a considerable amount of effort into this. We think we covered all the bases technically, financially. We had three neighborhood meetings and really heard good comments from the neighborhood folks. We had a town-wide public meeting. We had more comments. I think that our consultant did an excellent job in coming up with technical solutions and costs. And, and right now, I think that we've put it all out there. It's up to the, up to you folks and the people to determine where they want to go with this.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Okay. First of all, I want to commend both of you. I know the hard work that you put into this. I think right now, you're looking for our next step is to approve this plan.
Approve this plan to submit to DEM for their comments.
And normally, what is the turnaround time for them for comments? Do you know?
I have no idea, but I assume it's going to be promptly. We're, we're late getting it to them, and we need their comments quickly so that we can go to the next step in forming the enabling legislation, if that's the way we want to go.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
I just want to point out that the commission did a great job. They worked long and hard to get this done. Their, their efforts are appreciated. The, you have to remember that this is a plan, and there have been several plans in the past, and updates to it reflect the changing times, what laws have been passed, what technology improvements have been made. And I think that this plan does reflect that. I think the commission went about trying to find the options that were available to our residents in these areas, giving them the option of, basically, you have, you're an individual, you have to, you're on your own, you have to find the financing, refinance your mortgage, and pay for your individual system. Or you can go with a sewer plan, and there was a couple of options for that with the state revolving fund monies, with a 20-year horizon on that, versus trying to get grant money from the USDA with a 40-year horizon for payoff. With that, the grant, the USDA grant situation, that requires a district to be set up. And there are parameters around that which is causing this setup with neighborhoods. So they've thought this through very detailed, in detailed fashion. And I think it's, it's a good plan. And like any plan, 10 years from now, or 15, 20 years from now, it could change again. Technologies change, legislation changes. So to recap the next steps, I think getting this plan to Rhode Island DEM to get their feedback, they could have an issue with stormwater, the stormwater plan, that's also a possibility. But I think, well, time will tell. And I think also, as a next step, is, I think you're focused on legislation. But this plan also feeds into our comprehensive, community comprehensive plan. It feeds into that process. So this is a step towards that update to the comprehensive community plan. This does meet the requirements of what the current community plan requirements were for the wastewater management commission, to come up with the plan and provide financial information to the town council so that decisions can be made. So I think they have followed the requirements of their commission within the comprehensive community plan. There's also been a lot of talk of what other needs, especially with people who have already put in septic systems, mod septic systems, and the time horizon as to how long those will be operational. Like with anything, I built a house 20 years ago, and you have to maintain it. If you don't maintain it, falls and disrepair, you have a problem. And then you may, in fact, have to replace it and then meet with current standards for that type of system, rather than the original system you put in. So there's always a risk when you don't maintain your, your septic system, as people have found out. So I think this is a, is a good plan. I think there's also the piece of, changes to ordinances that would have to be made that we didn't mention, that, I think we've mentioned the checkerboard idea where certain people would be hooked up to the sewers, but certain other people, if they have their own septic system that has been replaced in the present, present time, is in working order, that they could have a certain horizon to keep their system, and then by ordinance, have them replace or hook up to, to the sewer system in that particular area. So I think this is just like a first step, and there are other things that build off of this, the community plan, as well as ordinances built off this. So this is just the first step, and I think the sooner we get it up to the state, the sooner we have their feedback, and whether they even approve this plan. So I think it's, it's a, it's a good job.
Thank you.
I just want to say, well done to the commission.
Hey, I would just say, just one thing, that obviously, we know in this town, in those specific areas, that there are issues there that we have to address. Whether we address them today or tomorrow, we will have to address them. So I think this is, the first step is, as Counsel Schabbert has said, and I would entertain a motion that we approve this for delivery to DEM.
Could I add one more comment, Mr. President? That is, Leroy, on page 93, if a motion is made, would it include a lending page 93 identifying the high priority areas? I don't think that this is consistent with the presentation you made tonight.
Take out left and right. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
We'll make that change.
Good.
Yeah. So I want to take a motion.
Well, I'd move, I'd move that we approve the wastewater facilities plan update prepared by AECOM, and submit it for review to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management with the aforementioned edit on page 93, to be consistent with the charts and graphs throughout.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Very much so.
David Perry, Chair Budget Committee, Joint Meeting of School Committee, Budget Committee, and Town Council for Review of Four-Year Ending June 30, 2013 Budget and Updates, September 12, 2013.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Council members. I'm here tonight to fulfill a promise I made back in May. It was the end of the budget season, but like I said back then, it never really ends. It's just a continuation. So what we'd like to do is get a joint meeting between the Town Council, the School Committee, and the Budget Committee on September 12th at 6:30. I believe that the data, I spoke to Mrs. Sherrett, the audit hasn't been done, but the books are fairly finalized and the school committee also has their final numbers. So we'd just like to go over the numbers, see what we did right, see what we did wrong, see if there's anything that's gonna hit us in the face for upcoming 14, 15, and to see how we're doing in 13, 14. So it's...
I'll make sure that the council checks their schedule and should be fine.
It's a Thursday night location?
Yeah.
It will be at the school library?
Yep.
Mr. President?
And has the school committee agreed to that?
They've been notified.
Mr. President, I'm not available that day. I don't know if you want legal counsel there, someone else in my office, or do you not anticipate it as a budget workshop?
It's just really a budget workshop.
Okay.
It's just a really, it's a year-end review, basically what it is.
I understand. Just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, we, we won't be voting on anything.
Okay.
We'll be sharing information.
Sharing information, correct.
6:30.
Will we need any paperwork for the meeting or preparation, or? Well, I, I would assume that the town administrator will provide us with those year-end numbers.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll provide you with the latest financial report, both revenue and expenses.
Correct. Okay. All set?
All right. I just have one more. I don't come to all these meetings, but I do listen to them at home. And if we didn't put anything in the budget this year for new microphones, everyone sounds like chipmunks, you know, when you're home.
We are chipmunks.
Even here, you can barely hear what's going on out here.
We actually have it on our agenda.
It's, it's on the agenda for tonight? I haven't looked it, I'm sorry. But we do need a new system.
I'll travel with my voice.
I'll put it in the budget for you.
Thanks, Dave.
We'll hold you to it.
Okay, all right. New business. Town Administrator, Request Approval Salary Increase Effective July 1, 2013. A, Janice Gomes, Senior Center Director. B, Tony Lynn McGowan, Tax Collector. C, John Lynn Court, Wastewater Superintendent.
Councilors, at the previous meeting, the performance reviews were going over in executive session, and these are my recommendations for the salary increases. You need me to go through them individually, or?
Yeah, I'm working through them individually, doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm requesting that the Senior Center Director be increased from $45,025 to The new salary includes $1,900 in longevity, which was being paid separately before, a one-time adjustment of $1,000 to bring her salary up to that of a secretary in Asme, and a 2% merit increase of $905. And that totals $49,055.
Okay. Anything from the council?
So the number from our last contract, or whatever was effective June 30th, would have been $45,025 plus $1,900?
Yes.
The increase is only on the $45.
They're simply including the longevity in with the salary.
Yeah. I thought we had done that already.
No. No, it wasn't done in the...
Oh, I'm, you're not waiting on me, I'm just fiddling around.
I wasn't sure if you had another question. Okay. All right, I will, I will entertain, I will entertain a motion regarding the annual salary increase for the Senior Center Director, Janice Gomes, from $42,025 to $49,055, which includes longevity, $1,900, a one-time adjustment of $1,000, and a 2% merit increase of $905.
Second?
Have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Janice. Town Administrator, Tax Collector, Tony Lynn McGowan.
Requesting that her salary be increased from $29,355 to $29,942, which represents a 2% merit increase of $587.
Okay. Anything from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tony Lynn. Okay. John Lynn Court, Wastewater Superintendent.
An annual salary increase in accordance with his employment contract and performance review, these all are effective July 1st, by the way, 2013, an increase from $56,271 to $57,396, which again represents a 2% merit increase of $1,025.
Hey, anything from the council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. So moved. We have a motion?
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Attorney Louis Harkins, Stafford Pond LLC, Request Town Council Approve the Signing of a Sidewalk Agreement by the Director of Public Works for a Sidewalk on the north side of Bogomash Road as requested by Planning Board for Subdivision.
Mr. President, members of the council, don't get frightened by the, by the fact we're putting up these plans. This is really a very simple issue. As you stated, I represent an entity called Harkins Stafford Pond LLC. Harkins, my client, has an approval, master plan approval from the Planning Board for a subdivision on the north side of Bogomash Road, which is approximately opposite, diagonally opposite from the basketball courts there. The Planning Board, Bill, can you turn to that one and say the sidewalk? The, the Planning Board wants my client to build a sidewalk running from the subdivision. Bill, can you point that out?
Sure. From the, it'll be from the east side of the, two subdivision roads that are proposed, be from the east side of the most westerly subdivision road to the property boundary, Duncan Donuts and the little mall is right over here, Stafford Road, Crandall Road, Bogomash Road here, if you orient yourself.
The sidewalk is about 900 feet long and it's an expense for my client. He doesn't really want to do it, but he wants to make the Planning Board happy, so he's gonna do it. Along comes the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, okay? A tiny portion of this, can you give roughly the footage, Bill?
That's approximately 80 feet.
About 80 feet of this is on land owned by the State of Rhode Island. It's been agreed all along that the town will maintain this side.
Put a toll on it.
Yeah, there you go. It's been agreed all along that the town will maintain this once it's done, but nothing is easy with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. They have this agreement that they presented to us. Steve Berlucci, quite correctly, the Director of Public Works, when he saw this thing, went to the solicitor for the Planning Board, Peter Ujero. Peter Ujero said, get the Town Council's imprimatur before you sign this thing. So that's why we're here. Kate, did I say anything wrong?
What did I do?
No. You want to take it, sure.
I'm looking at it and trying to figure out.
Can we just have Mr. Smith, just identify yourself with the record, please?
Yes, I'm Bill Smith from Civil Engineering Concepts.
Thanks. The one question I have is, and it may not, may not matter, but why, how is there 80 feet of 900 feet that is not owned by a party that is developing that? Where, is there just a carve-out that they just happen to own from colonial wars?
There's a small piece of wetland that's associated from here that comes, basically, the recreation area across the street has a culvert that discharges here, and the wetland starts to that culvert. Instead of filling wetlands to put the sidewalk and keeping it off of the DOT property, we, we actually brought it to the south between the road and the wetlands so that we weren't gonna have a wetland crossing.
So they own the, or have some amount of right to that wetland area?
Well, DEM regulates the wetland. DOT actually owns the road right-of-way, so we're bouncing between the two different agencies trying to get our permits. DEM wants to keep us out of the wetlands and then DOT, if we're gonna do work in, in there right-of-way, is making us go through this process.
Okay.
The only issue, though, again, is the maintenance of the sidewalk once it's constructed. And I, I think it's been understood all along that the town is willing to maintain.
I've reviewed the agreement and I don't have any problems with it. I mean, by law, the town's responsible, even on a state road, the town's responsible for maintenance of sidewalks once they're in, as long as, and my understanding is that Mr. Berlucci has indicated, he's aware of his responsibilities of maintaining it and also there's an associated drainage swale that he'll have to maintain, just as he would any other drainage swale along, if we were a town road. But as long as that's understood and accepted from a legal point of view, I have no problem with it.
And they're, they're proper sidewalks, Kate, with concrete and granite berm, or?
Yes, they're gonna be separated from the roadway a little bit, pushed away from the, the roadway with a wider grassy area between roadway and, and the walkway.
Excellent.
Our standard detailing has a four-inch separation. This is gonna be more than that to get people away from the traffic.
Wonderful. Plant a tree there if you can.
No, no trees.
No trees.
No trees. Just to answer the solicitor's question, I'm fully aware that we'll, the DPW is responsible to maintain all, all the sidewalks in town, whether they belong to the town or, or the state. But these sidewalks, this particular sidewalk is going to connect into the state's proposed Bliss Four Corners Roundabout. So we'll have a sidewalk along the entire north side across the proposer's property, connected right into the sidewalk in front of Duncan Donuts. And on the other side, we'll have sidewalks eventually across the whole library and then connecting into the roundabout design. So there'll be sidewalks on north and south side of Bogomash from the playground all the way up to Bliss Four Corners.
Good. Okay.
Kate, what's the, just anecdotally, what's the current status of this development project?
The development project has received a conditional master plan approval and it's currently under preliminary plan review. The real, the outstanding items for the preliminary plan are the DOT approval of the physical alteration permit and the DEM approvals, and all of that is kind of hinging on this piece of the puzzle. But that's the status at the moment.
And that's 16 lots total?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yes.
Sixteen.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the council?
Just that I have two Exhibit Bs attached.
Yeah, and they're both the same.
And I don't have an Exhibit A.
That's, that's what you have, is what the Rhode Island Department of Transportation sent off. The, the two Exhibit Bs, as near as I can tell, are exactly the same as each other.
They are?
Yeah.
Who is A?
So what, what's an Exhibit A?
The Exhibit A was just a sketch showing the location of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we, it's, it's a physical plan showing, but, but they didn't send it. That's what they sent us. We're not gonna substitute something if they didn't send it. You, you can't believe.
I can believe, I can believe.
We have pretty good imagination.
Yes, we do.
I just would be worried that they're, on their drawing, they're committing you to more sidewalk than you're requesting.
Before anybody signs it, don't worry, we'll look at the sketch.
Okay. Okay.
We, we prepared the sketch and it mustn't have been sent.
Okay. Very good. I, I just didn't know whether we had a photocopy problem or whether this was actually an issue.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that, but no.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Just one quick question. It says on this Exhibit B, the estimated budget for implementing this plan is approximately $1,000 per year. Is that the estimated DPW cost for maintaining 900 some odd feet of sidewalk?
I can't answer that, maybe Steve would. That, that would be more than sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
The one thing, question I had was, Andy, did you review this? And if so, I know the answer's yes. Did you have any comments, questions, or objections?
No, as indicated, yes, I reviewed it and no, I do not have any comments or objections. I'm okay with it.
Okay. I will entertain a motion that we approve to allow the Director of Public Works to sign an agreement regarding sidewalks, a sidewalk agreement with the State of Rhode Island on Bogomash Road as stated in the accompanying documents.
I would happily move that we approve the signing of a sidewalk agreement by the Director of Public Works, Stephen Berlucci, for a sidewalk on the north side of Bogomash Road as requested by Planning, the Planning Board for Subdivision referencing Harkins Stafford Pond LLC's application.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey. Town Administrator, Tivlin Business Park, Request Town Council Review and Comment Regarding Request for Proposals, RFP, For Sale of Entire Business Park Incorporating Council Recommendations. Request Approval to Advertise.
As you're well aware of, we've owned this industrial park for many, 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 many years. And I think it's about time that, that we need to do something about it. And what I'm requesting at this point is to put the entire business park up for sale. Now, having said that, we did not too long ago receive an offer, as you may recall, to purchase the entire business park, but it seemed to be a very low offer. So to see what interest there is, I'd like to issue this RFP to see what type of responses that we may get. Now, before, before we discuss anything in the RFP, I'd like to make two changes to it. One is on page one, which would be adding my fax number, and then on page four, section F, deleting the entire section F.
Deleting it?
What page?
Page four.
Page four. Committed uses?
Committed uses.
Why is that, Jim?
And let them, let them tell us what they want to do.
Rather than limiting to what they, they can do, let them tell us what they want to do.
Right. And then we, we can see if it's to our liking or not.
Will you have language stating that we want to see proposed uses?
We will.
Yeah, that would be required.
Jim, just, just two thoughts I have on this.
Jim, just, just two thoughts I have on this. Would the RFP include maps? Would that?
We can, we're looking for your comments. We can include maps.
Sure. And then the second thing is, I don't know, I have very limited or no experience in this space, but is there any value in including some information, you know, demographic information about the town, or expanded commentary about the makeup of the community? Not, you know, certainly easier if we, you know, perhaps pointed to a section on the new website or something like that. I don't know if that sort of information is of value in this sort of thing.
We can certainly, I mean, you would think that they would do that on their own?
Sure.
Okay, but we can certainly refer them to our website.
Anything else from the council?
Yeah, a couple. Is there a, is there a time window, or is this just open-ended?
No, we haven't put any of the dates in there.
No, I see.
Jim, am I assuming that you're going to run it open for 30 days?
Yes.
So, whatever the first date of issuance is in the paper, it'll be 30 days hence from there. When will we do?
And how does this? I'm just trying to sort of understand what we're trying to accomplish through an RFP that we wouldn't otherwise accomplish through a regular offering, offering materials, because, I mean, the park's for sale already. Are we trying to set a definitive after 30 days, we're going to review these proposals, and then? Because we only get to do that so many times when we don't pick somebody to sell the park to. And it's also, at least in my opinion, fairly subjective. Just this idea that we can see what they say and pick which one we like. We can only do that so many times, is my initial reaction. Am I making any sense?
Yes, you are.
I just, given the number of years, it's been, it's been many years since this was marketed by a broker.
Oh, I know.
Inactively marketed.
But we keep saying that the park is for sale. It is for sale.
Right, but I don't know that, you know, the Boston development market doesn't know that it's for sale. And I think this was the idea as a way of getting it out there. We've been getting these unsolicited offers. And as a public entity, there's a concern with just, you know, taking the first off, I mean, anybody would have a concern by taking the first offer, but particularly as a public entity, that we should get this out there as a public, public thing. Now, when we do this, we may, depending on the responses, may lead to, in the future, having a broker or something like that. The, you know, the tactics may change. But this seemed to be the most cost-efficient way, if you will, to get it out there to begin with. And at least it's my understanding that the policy, that the town is not necessarily interested in the highest dollar bid. You're looking for some combination of a return on the investment dollar-wise, but also what's good for the town, what'll provide uses that will benefit the residents and provide jobs to the town. So, that makes it something where we wouldn't want to do like a bankruptcy or receivership petition would put it out just for the, you know, the highest offer and try to create an auction for it.
I'm assuming that these three mediums are local? I'm not aware of the Banker and Tradesman. I'm not familiar with them. Is that a local?
No, it's Boston.
That's Boston? So, local to New England, basically?
Well, Banker and Tradesman and New England Real Estate Journal are regional. New England Real Estate Journal is a partner of the New York State Real Estate Journal. They're fairly local, but they're, they're run out of Boston. Province Journal's obviously run out of.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry about that. They're generally local, regional. These are. I mean, I would probably see what else we could do, but I don't know.
What about the idea of maybe, is there something that's fairly not too expensive to maybe advertise in a national level?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I would say Banker and Tradesman and the New England Real Estate Journal are somewhat national, because other cities.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this.
They're exposure. Countries, you know, get stuff from the south, the east, the west, to see what's going on.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know of any one particular source. Probably, I mean, Boston Globe and the New York Times. I mean, I don't know of any.
The Wall Street Journal. But that's going to be thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
To run any kind of noticeable.
Like I said, is there something not too costly?
We're in discussion, ma'am.
All right, when can I say something? Not at all tonight?
Not tonight. It's not a hearing.
And there was, there was no discussion for the water treatment thing either?
It's not a hearing.
So, there's never anything that anybody can say about anything?
Ma'am, I'll say it the third time.
Seems that way.
It's not a hearing. Thank you.
You know, aside from, and that's sort of where Andy was saying about cost-effective, aside from engaging a broker and publicly listing the property, we don't get the exposure of those sorts of, you know, those sorts of organizations and services that would be more national. You know, I'm not an industrial developer, but when these things come to the market, people pay attention. I mean, they're looking for opportunities. If you're from Atlanta or somewhere else, and there is no shortage of land in other parts of the country as well, so your, your scope is maybe a little more global. But that's issued from the hip kind of thing.
The other thing that we could do is, we can send this directly. There are a handful of commercial real estate brokers regionally and in Providence that we can, the ones who specialize in the commercial industrial property, we can send a copy of it directly to them. We're not offering them a commission, but then they'll, you know, they'll go out and try to get, obviously, a buyer's broker agreement to get their, for their commission paid. But that would be another way to extend the exposure at no cost to us.
How does this, how, so in sort of, say, the Providence Journal, how does this appear as, is this a kind of a black and white notice in the?
I think we would run it in the.
Legal.
No, not the legal. Never seen, no, we run it, want to run it in the Sunday, one of the Sunday sections, probably the Sunday real estate section or the Sunday, they don't call it the business section anymore.
I don't read the paper.
But the same places where they put, you know, announcements, who's moving to what company and stuff, that we, I would think we would want to go for that. And that's where a lot of the, a lot of the properties that are in foreclosure and are being, and receivership are advertised, we would want to run it right in that section with them again, because that's where people are going to look for development opportunities. And probably as a, as a border to add, perhaps with a, with a small map on it as well.
Do we have an idea of what, what this is going to cost to run?
I haven't, I haven't gotten a.
Well, I can tell you the journal.
No, I don't have the cost yet, but it's going to cost quite a few dollars to put it in the Providence Journal.
Yeah, the journal is going to be pricey.
And I don't know what the cost would be for the other, New England Real Estate Journal or the Banker and Tradesman.
Anything else from the council?
Question, clarification, please. Is Section F, did I hear you saying it will be removed?
Deleted. Delete F. You know, obviously, you know, we've looked at this industrial park six ways to Sundays and tried to figure out, what do we want to do with it? How do we market it? How do we get it out there? You know, I think this is one more start. And I think letting someone come to us saying what they want to put into it, rather than limiting it and saying, "We only want this," or "We're only looking for this." Let them come, and we'll see what, you know, what types of offers they have. My only concern is, obviously, is the cost. I know the journal is going to be pricey, but you have to sometime look at it as a return on investment and hope that we get some pretty good bites on it. So, I'm in, I'm in favor of it, and let's see where the, you know, if there's interest and hope that it's broader than our own backyard. So, if there's nothing else from the council.
Should we put a limit on the, on the advertising cost? Because where are we going to get the funds? Is this coming out of contingency?
I would hope that it would come out of the advertising budget that the town clerk has.
Yeah, I would guess, and again, this is only, this is only a wag, but I would guess that it probably costs us between $25 and $3,000 between all these publications. That, that would be my best guesstimate, because I know an ad like this in the journal is probably going to cost you $1,200.
Yeah.
So, our goal, you know, I don't know what the, the, how long this is going to run in the journal. Is it one week or is it a month?
I would say one week.
Okay, because so the, the Banker and Tradesman's a monthly publication, and New England Real Estate Journal's twice a month. So, whatever our timeline, we should probably make sure those.
I think we try to key it so it would all run fairly close together in time. If, if we've got the most leave for the monthly, you know, we'll wait to run the journal ad approximately at the same time.
And I'm sure there's an online presence for all of these things as well.
Would it also be feasible to maybe possibly contact the parties who submitted proposals in the past, well, most recently?
Yeah, we will, we'll contact, the people who've submitted proposals will contact directly with a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah, once it's advertised, you can send it to, you know, people, but you can't release it prior to it being advertised.
So, anything else from the council?
I mean, as long as it's, it's, as long as it's out there for enough time, you know, I don't, I know you're going to set a date, whenever that is, but I imagine we're probably going to be getting responses in, no sooner than about 60 days, I should say, right? Maybe even longer. I would err on the side of allowing it to circulate a little longer than, rather than not. We're not in a rush, are we? We're in the 25-year rush.
I think, I think we'll make, we'll make sure that it's at least 30 days from the latest.
Yeah, that's fine.
One of these that runs.
That's fine.
So, it may well be longer than the, you know, 30 days and when the first one runs.
Okay, and so I will entertain a motion, if you want to incorporate a limit on the funds. Would we say 4,000? 5,000?
5,000.
Could you speak, this is becoming a subliminal transaction here. What is the, how can you just say?
We're entertaining a motion.
Yes, for what?
For the RFP with a cost limit of 5,000.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to issue an RFP for the sale of the industrial park with the suggestions and additions and amendments that were discussed, and we put a cap of $5,000 for the RFP advertising costs.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
I do have one suggestion, since we did have such success with the Knottwood School for-sale sign, that we might put a for-sale sign at the industrial park as well, referring them to Mr. Goncalo with his phone number. Just a suggestion.
His home phone number.
We'll try that. We'll put a big one up there.
Bids and requests for proposals. DPW Director Berlucci. Request permission to advertise for bids for supply and installation of various godrail items to be used on as needed basis, continued from the August 13 meeting.
Back for round two, I guess. When we talk about rebuilding roads and paving, there's a lot of items in the past that have been used to accomplish that purpose, from hiring grader, from hiring a surveyor to put in a sideline in case you don't want to cross into their properties. There's a myriad of things that come, come into play. Painting the lines, crack ceiling, hiring cameras maybe to look in drainage, so the drainage is good so the road doesn't collapse when, so when we come to just paving and putting down the blacktop, it's more involved than that. But godrail is kind of separate, and that's why I came to you for a separate proposal, because there are cases when someone crashes into a godrail and takes off, and we can't collect the insurance money to fix it. We have to pay to fix it somewhere, and it's always cheaper to go out for a bid like this, for multiple bids, than to just bring a contractor in at the time of the accident. So, I know there was the issue with using restricted paving funds, but I still, I still believe that the budget, that my annual budget that's appropriated every year can be used for myriad of purposes, and one of them could be godrail. I'm sorry to say. But yikes.
And let me just add one comment to that. We would not be using carry-forward funds for godrail. We would only be using the new FY14 budget.
Okay. And again, you know, and I see where it says resolved and so forth and, and all that. I have two, two things, Steve. Number one, I have no idea, we're going out to bid on godrails, and I have no idea what it's going to cost us. I mean, normally when you go out for bid on something, you have a general idea what it's going to cost you. Usually say, you know, I'm going out, it's going to be between X and X. You know, I'm, so I'm going to go out to bid on something that I have, could cost 5,000, could cost 500,000. Don't know. Number one. Number two, I still have an issue regarding paving.
Okay.
You know, I think godrails should be separate account, take it from somewhere else as additional road work, quote unquote. I mean, you don't, you don't charge sidewalks to paving, right?
What was that again?
You don't charge sidewalks to paving.
If I was to build a sidewalk, I would charge it to paving.
You would?
Yes. It's part of the, I define paving as maintaining the road from sideline to sideline, and, you know, it's, there's so many items. I mean, I would put curving in under paving, I would put sidewalks in under paving, I'd do anything but drainage, because I have a separate item for drainage, and I have a separate item for signs. Everything else that I need to take care of a road is paid under the paving funds.
My personal opinion was this resolution, the spirit of it, was to make sure that the roads get paved in dividend. And that's why all the carryover could be restricted for paving, because the roads needed to be paved.
There's no doubt.
So, I think that's what the spirit of the resolution is, and I think that the people also want the paving money to be spent on paving. And that was how the resolution developed, because that money was being used carry-forward on other things. That, that, and I was around during that discussion. I was in the audience. And that's how I feel about it. I feel paving was supposed to be just for paving and not for godrails.
I'll do anything you.
No, no, again, and I understand, I mean, I believe filling in cracks in the road is part of paving.
Right.
You know, all that other stuff, but godrails, again, without knowing a number, you know, I, I'm just not, personally, I'm just not comfortable.
In six years, I've spent $3,500, and that was June 29 of this last year. In six years, I've spent $3,500, and that was June 29th of this last June 29th. I haven't spent a dime on guardrail, six years since I've been here. It's not to put in three miles of guardrail, Mr. President, it's to handle a crash. And if it takes four panels, then we spend 20 bucks a foot, you know, if it's, so that's, it's just for accidents, really.
Steve, I just think it should come from another budget line. That's, that is my only opinion, that it should come from, and I know at this point, we know.
I know, but we don't have another budget line.
And let me finish.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
We, we don't know, just like you just said, we have no idea whether we're going to need five feet of guardrail or 500 feet of guardrail, because it all depends on the need, if there's an accident, if there's an area. We had an, we had an area on Lucy Avenue where somebody came down, and if you're familiar with Lucy Avenue, it's an L-shaped street, and there were always some bushes there and some trees, but the owner of the property adjacent to the road cleared it. And some woman came down in a snowstorm and she went straight off. Fortunately, there were no injuries, okay, but we put a guardrail there. We put a section of guardrail there to protect. It's the same thing with, with that other street near Bismack out there where the guy was developing...
The end of Dewish, yeah.
And we needed some guardrail to protect the traffic there. Other than that, we probably didn't. But how do you budget an account? How do you put, how do you ask the budget committee for money and have them say, "Well, give me the basis for it"?
Let's ask them.
Mr. Beruchy, could we get a, it indicates here in the request that it would be on an as-needed basis. Roughly, what is your estimate as to what we've been spending on an, in an average year, let's say over the last five years? Well, what are we spending?
$3,600.
$3,600.
A thousand dollars a year?
No, even a thousand dollars a year.
No, if you average it out, but...
Is 700 or 800 meant to be a budget item?
No.
Dave?
No, well, here's, here's my...
Next it'll be pencils, you know.
Thought process on this. If it was $1,000 or $2,000, I'd say, "Okay, let's, let's take it out of somewhere." But a $50,000 item, I think, should have been budgeted. We should have known about this.
It wasn't $50,000.
You can say, you know, "We don't know about it," but then why do we need the $50,000?
It's not $50,000.
We're not talking about...
No, no, how much is it?
We don't know.
We don't know.
A thousand or...
He's a very gentle speaker. Mr. Beruchy has said that he's, he's spent $3,600 in the last, how many years, Steve?
Well, that was last, five or six, you know, so when there's an accident or a heavy need.
600 bucks a year.
And essentially, all we're doing is we're getting competitive quotes, so we have the lowest possible price, so that when there's a need, we know where to go and fix it.
I know I wasn't, I wasn't here two weeks ago, but what is the, what is the stumbling block here? Why, why are we...
It's taking it from paving.
Paying the account.
Yeah, it's basically taking it from the paving account.
Okay. And we have a problem with that? I'm just trying to get caught up.
Initially, the whole reason was to encumber the paving account for paving, because in the past, it had been taken, money had been taken for paving and used elsewhere.
And streets weren't being paved.
So it was set up that if it was paving dollars, it was for paving.
So here's my confusion, and is, there are monies that exist under the paving account for current-year stuff, and then...
Roadwork.
And then everything that's left over in the rest of the accounts at the end of the fiscal year gets put into the paving account earmarked exclusively for paving.
Correct.
So are we, are we afraid that $600 is going to, I don't understand.
Again, I'll only speak for myself. The intent for this was to make sure that monies were not being, whether it's $1, $6, or $6,000, that they weren't being used for other things other than paving. That was the intent. And again, all I'm saying is, you know, again, I mean...
And I appreciate that, but I don't believe it restricted the account itself in entirety to be used only for bitumous asphalt material. I think the funds carried forward may have that, that argument may be made, but there are base dollars in that paving account that are used for other things. I'm, maybe I'm just not understanding.
To your point, I feel like if there's a quantifiable amount that would be carried over into the next fiscal year that would be deemed only for paving proper, I feel like there's enough controls and balances in there where we could ensure that whatever amount that was, was only used for paving.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's my, I mean, I don't think it's crazy bookkeeping.
I presume that number is far, is far lower than the absolute balance of the account.
Exactly. I mean, how much did we carry over this pass here?
30,000.
Yeah, it's about 37,000.
37.
What do we budget, 150,000, 160,000?
Yeah.
How much of that was used for paving?
I would say even if, what did we say, 30,000? Even if $30,100 is used for paving, we've fulfilled the requirement that that, that ordinance has, or that, that...
Resolution.
Resolution has said. I mean, I, I just don't understand.
I'm not, I just don't understand why we're trying to, is there a definition of the word paving that would limit us so that we can't use it for curbing, we can't use it for sidewalk, we can't use it for the grassway, we can't use it for an island, we can't use it for gravel, we can't use it for clamshells? I don't think that the word paving can't be read broad enough to include another $600 for what I would have thought was part of paving, and that is a guardrail, if it's part of the roadway.
Well, I think Mr. Roderick pointed out that $600 is not, it's not in the bid, and the definition that's provided for, the reason for the bid is a little ambiguous. It covers a very broad range of things, whether it's repair, replace, or install new guardrail throughout town. So, I mean...
Not part of repairing a road.
It's sort of a broad term, so it's really hard to quantify what exactly we're talking about. So it's like, it's almost like we're bidding for, you know, a blank check.
You know, Steve, I mean, I understand and I agree, it's all part of the road in general, you know, but, and I'll only speak for myself, being here like Jay here at the longest, how we saw monies that were quote unquote said "for this," and then, "Well, we need it for something else." And I just want to be clear that this isn't a beginning. So we need guardrails. Well, now we might need a tree. I'm just using these as examples, you know, and, oh, we might want to put, you know, a sign 10 feet further into the woods, but it's not really on the roadway, you know, and I'm just saying, I just feel that, to me, this bid should have said, you know, "We're looking for $600 worth of guardrail, $700 worth of guardrail." You know, "I'm sure we can find $700 somewhere," you know, "within your budget." But, but to have a blank saying, "Yeah, I want to go out to bid, and all I have is a list of how many linear feet of what," I have no idea.
That's, that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to get a price per linear foot.
But you have to have a general idea. You don't say you're going to go buy a truck and say, "All right, I think the truck costs 100,000," but if the bid comes in at 500,000, it's okay. You have to have a general idea what it's going to be.
But we don't know how many feet we're going to need. We're limited by our budgets anyway.
You know how many, you know how many feet of a guardrail roughly you have in town. It's not going to exceed that.
It's going to be replaced, but...
Steve, is this, is the point of...
Mr. President, when the bid comes back, you review it, right, to award it. So that'll be a time when you can look at the, you know, I'll find the money somewhere else outside of paving. I promise that you're there, all right? And we'll set up an account or whatever to handle it, but I would expect the bid to come in like 5,000. And we may not use none. I hope we don't use any, you know, and, but again, you have a chance. If you allow it to be advertised, it's coming back to you for review, for approval. If you don't like it, gone, and we'll try again some other way.
Can I just ask a question? This, this request for bid is, it's for services. You're trying to find companies that will install guardrail.
Exactly.
Right? You're not buying, this is not buying guardrail and putting it in the backlot until it's needed and then installing it ourselves. We're, this is going out for bid for services. So like, if you went out for bid for a lawnmower service, and you're saying the parameters are, "We want to know how much you're going to charge us per linear foot for this, how much for that for a guardrail."
If and when we need it.
If and when we need it. So it's like, almost like a, if you're going out for services to a mowing company, it's when they mow it, they send you a bill and say, "This is how much it costs." So this is not going out and buying guardrail. This is going out and buying...
It should be a service contract.
It's a service contract to hire, get bids on guardrail installers to say, "Okay, how much would you charge us?" And then we have a comparison of how much each one will charge us per linear foot of guardrail. And then we have a comparison, and then can say, "Okay, which one out of these service providers we will pick because they have the best price on guardrail?" So it's not about, not buying guardrails. We're buying, we're going out for a bid to determine what service company for guardrail installation we would choose. So it's, that's why there's no dollar associated with it. We're not going out and buying X amount of linear foot for a $5,000 worth. We're going out for a bid for a service company to install guardrails.
It's actually, if I may, it's actually a materials contract, and it's actually most analogous to what you're concerned about, the paving. When you go out every year and you solicit bids from all the big paving contractors and say, "Okay, how much are you going to charge us to do roads per linear foot in the town area today?" No, we don't know which roads we're going to do, or how much, because in fact, it's going to depend on how much money we have left over and so forth and our needs, but we want to know, we want to establish now what, what your cost per foot is. And you're doing that, you're doing that with the guardrail here. That's, that's what it's like. And you're right, you may end up doing none of it or some of it. And my suggestion, I guess, is why don't you let the bids go out, at least to find out what the prices are, and then it can come back to you for your information, and as the Public Works Director has indicated, he'll, he'll take the money, he'll get the money from somewhere else. If it's below the threshold, the administrator can authorize the transfer from another account. If not, it'll be coming back to you to authorize the transfer. But I think, I think the idea is to have the contractors lined up, because if someone takes out a section of guardrail in a crash on Friday night, he's not able to wait to do it. He's going to be able to have someone that he can call to be there Monday morning to replace that section of guardrail. And right now, I assume you're just using, are you, well, you said you haven't. You're using the one we had the last time, which was several years ago?
No, no, we went out to bid, we went out to bid two years ago, and that bid ended this June 30th, so we're just going out to bids again.
And, and we, did we exercise any, did we engage that, that contractor under that contract?
Yes, we have.
For the amount, a small amount of money?
Small amount of money, yeah.
Which was less than the full amount that they bid in order...
Per item.
It's, okay, all right.
Bid per item, yeah.
You said $5,000.
Well, I'm guessing when the, when the contractor bids it, we have to look at their total.
Right.
And I'm guessing their totals be somewhere there, but we may not spend a dime.
Yeah. You're not going to pay them until you engage them to do the service.
Until you engage them, and they know it's on an as-needed basis.
So I have a question. If we've been using this gentleman for the last three years, how are we paying him, and what account are we paying him?
Paving.
We're paying him out of paving.
We pay the police out of paving. I mean, that's it. We pay the police out of paving also, so, I mean, if I have to break down the paving item, I'll get, I'll say we're going to add 15 more items to the budget.
You pay the police out of paving for details?
Yes. I don't have an item for police details, so they, if we were doing drainage work, I would pay the police out of the drainage fund. If we're paving, I pay them out of the paving fund. Putting up signs, I'd pay them out of the sign fund.
What we really need to do, as the administrator indicated, is rename the account. It should be road maintenance and paving, because it's not strictly just paving, paving the asphalt.
Account and a paving account.
I think you're correct, because the majority of people think that when you say paving, it's going to paving.
Going to paving.
And not paying policemen.
And I think that's why you're hearing saying, "Okay, we're not..."
That's a cost associated with paving a road. Without the policemen, you don't get to pave the road. I don't understand the, the hanging.
It's not just throwing out asphalt on the road and putting a steamroller over it.
Is this like the chicken and the egg? What comes first? I don't know.
Without one, you don't have the other, I think is what I'm saying.
Right. If you have to, if you're doing a complete reconstruction and ripping up the pavement, the cost of that pavement ripper is also coming out of paving.
Right.
And everything, and the gravel and stone, so it's going on and on.
So why is that different than the rest of the costs associated with paving the road?
And lines are coming up next. I'll be coming through with the exact same thing for lines, because I pave that out of paving and...
Well, whose definition of paving? Or, I mean, that's the thing, right?
It's fine.
Then why are we asking the council for permission for $5,000 if you've been doing a paving right along? Why did it have to...
We're advertising for contractor services.
That's all the council's being asked for the bids authorized.
Contractor services, that's all.
And that's how this all came about.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, this was a learning experience.
Sounds like something good for our meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Certainly, you've got to be on a budget discussion.
Okay, it's, it's really just a request to go out to bid, so we'll see what happens and we'll go from there. But again, I think we do need to clarify what actually constitutes that account, what really goes into that account.
Okay, yeah.
Because again, and I'll only speak for myself, that I think the understanding was that paving, this, the dollars that were going to be carried over, you know, whatever, were going to be strictly for paving. And I think that's, and I think that's, that's the way the resolution, I think, was sold, and that's the way, I think, that's the way the people voted for it.
That's right, you wanted to...
My memorandum indicates a lot of what, you know, it says, "Items such as," that we've used for the paving account historically. Items such as curbing, striping, pothole patch, guardrail, crack ceiling, greater rental, survey for sideline location when paving, et cetera, you know. And if we have to try to separate all that from bituminous concrete, you know, I mean, I don't know how you do that. Maybe Steve does, but...
That's not what we're saying. We'll just have another discussion about it.
Yeah, I think we just need to clarify so that everybody understands, because again, you know, when this risk came up, and I know, Steve, you always think it's just me, but again, you know, because I remember many, many discussions over the last six years about the paving account.
There's no doubt. It paid for, it paid for everything, outside of roads.
Exactly.
Outside of roads, yeah.
And that's why, and that's why they wanted to make sure that it was only used for the roads. Okay. So all said and done, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to advertise for bids for the supply and installation of various guardrail items to be used on an ad-needed basis as identified in Agenda Item H1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. Mayor Town Administrator, Distribution of Verona Community Development Block Grant Award for $122,612.
Once again this year, we requested $300,000 worth of funding from the Community Development Block Grant, and on August 13th, we received an award of $122,612, and I will read that out for the audience. We had requested $10,000 for administration and received 6,200. We had requested $170,250 for North Tivannan Streets and Sewers. We received 83,652. Requested $5,000 for East Bay Community Action, received 2,500. Requested 5,000 for the Women's Resource Center, received 4,000. Requested the Housing Hotlines Community Requested the housing hotlines, community housing hotline. We requested 3750 and received 2260 for Community Housing Land Trust, 3,000. Received 2,000. St. Elizabeth's Adult Health... Adult Day Services. We requested 5,000, received 2. SVPRI, Micro Enterprise Incubator, we requested 3 and received 3. That was a new item. Housing Rehabilitation for Community Housing, we requested 30 and received 17. We also requested 50,000 for the Bayview Recreation Area, received 0. And 15,000 for the Senior Center for a stove and refrigerator and received 0. So out of the $300,000, we received $122,612 as compared to last year's award of $173,000 for similar items. They're cutting back like everywhere else, I guess. But I just wanted to make that announcement. Then I have two more. Recycling, July 13... July of 2013, we recycled 186 tons, which was 30 tons more than the previous July. We are the third highest improved in the state of Rhode Island. The Fire Department will be sponsoring a blood drive on September the 7th at the North Tivern Station. It'll take place between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and you will need your driver's license or some other form of ID in order to donate. Thank you.
Council, announcements, comments, or questions? Tom Sossiter.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items here. You've got... First item is just for distribution... Well, they're both the distribution. First one is McLaughlin versus Zoning Board of Review. This is one of these matters that's been going on for a while. And just as a general matter, this is something we've discussed with the council before, but for the public. Generally, the town's position is not to push litigation, but where this is a case where someone... They were denied by the zoning board. They took an appeal. They're letting it sit. The offending structure is sitting, so we've been pushing it. And so we're providing you a copy of our filing. They have not filed further, but we filed further and are pushing, obviously, to try to have this resolved in the court. Next item is K2 is regarding the scott river bridge tolls litigation, which we expect to be heating up now once the judge returns from his summer vacation. Hopefully, we'll have our motion to intervene together with the town of Bristol. That motion hopefully will be heard in September. And what I provided you here is the most recent area of skirmish, which is over the record. This case was filed as an agency. The Rhode Island DOT and the Federal Highway Administration are supposed to submit the record. We were not able to agree on it, because basically their position was the only record is their reevaluated environmental impact statement from this spring, from... That was finally certified in the spring of 2013. That's what they consider the record. All the stuff that was done in 2001, and 2002, and 2003 that said no tolls, they're saying isn't part of the record. Surprise, surprise. So you're provided with our motion to compel the filing of the record, their response, and then our further response to their response at the moment. I would expect this to be heard by the judge sometime in... Again, in September. If I could ask you to add an item to the agenda just for discussion under solicitors, seeing as how it's not too late. If you could add a discussion of gifts to government employees, I'd just like to discuss that briefly. So moved.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, added.
Apparently, there is Sam's Club has opened up or is opening up in Fall River, and as part of their marketing efforts is distributing free memberships to various entities. And they have approached the town and town entities about providing them with free membership. And my understanding actually is they went to one of the departments directly, and they've already accepted it. This was before I knew about it. It is my opinion that this... These memberships are worth more than $25. I believe they're $35 or $40. And then this is not allowed under the Rhode Island Ethics Commission regulations. This is a gift, a gift to someone just because they happen to be a town employee. Now, there's no interested party here in the sense they're not in the town border. It's not like town employees are going to be doing anything in particular as far as regulating them, but I think the regulations are clear about the gift, and I think it's unethical for people to receive a gift just because they happen to be a government or public employee. So it's been my direction to the administrator to not allow any of the town employees to receive these Sam's Club's memberships, and the ones who've already received them should return them immediately to stay in compliance with the Ethics Commission regulations. My understanding is that the school committee, they also have accepted it. That's obviously they have their own legal counsel. That's up for them to do. But as far as the rest of the town employees, I do not believe that they should be accepting these gifts. So I'm sorry to be a Scrooge, but I think it's something we have to do. And that's why I wanted to get that out publicly again. I don't want people to... That's the whole problem of the perception, is saying, "Oh, it's just you work for the town, so you get something." No, it doesn't work that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Town Clerk, items and announcements. Council, sound system.
She's not here.
Okay, our town clerk is not here.
She might be.
Has she arrived?
I don't know. The lights don't...
Yeah, I should go with the car.
No, the light's still on.
She's probably still with her own.
Oh, she is here.
Oh, she is.
Is she there?
She's there. She's lighting up.
The recording of the last... Our last meeting was pretty bad. I put it off, couldn't understand any of it.
I just placed that item on the council agenda, because I know Brett, you've worked with it before and gave me the reference of the name. I just wanted to make the council aware that we're getting an awful lot of complaints on the idea that these audio parts especially... And we keep saying that, "Oh, it's okay. We kind of mend it for the day." But I think it's time we start to look into getting proposals on. So it was just to make you aware that Brett had already sent me a couple of names in the past that I had contacted from Treehouse Productions. And we're trying to gather information, and then we're going to have to come back to the council, and probably an hour if we go out and get it better. That would not be a budgeted item. It might need to come out of council contingency.
You mentioned earlier, the budget committee chairman indicated he was amenable to...
Oh, all right. Well, there you go. It was just to bring you up to speed on where we are. This is really getting beyond... I'm getting calls all the time on this.
Yeah, I think we're about two meetings away from Tom throwing a shoe at us, so...
It didn't give you any help.
So you want me to proceed and keep trying to...
Yes, absolutely. I can give you any help if you need, Nancy, on the subject.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mellow. Okay, Mr. Lambert.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A5, where acquisition of real property for public purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 8A1, where personnel performance. Gareth Ames.
Second.
Motion, second, has notice been given?
Yes. We can let the record reflect that written notice has been given to Mr. Ames, and he has elected to have this in executive session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And stay in the executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A1, where Town Administrator Personnel Performance, James Goncalo.
Second.
And Mr. Goncalo has also received written notice and has indicated that...